And our first budget presentation, probate. Judge Keeney from the great town of Summers.
I spend most of my time in Enfield.
Yeah, representing Enfield and Summers and Stafford and Union, right?
Right, four towns.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Just give it, if you're mind, a little bit of brief overview and then we'll hit the specifics on the budget and then Q and A. Great. Again, it's a real pleasure to be here before the council today. I just noticed that it's the same day we had the meeting last year.
Yes.
Eighteenth. This is good. You guys are right on schedule. The primary focus of the probate courts is, from my perspective, is service, access, and efficiency. Now, the access, we, as you know, we're open forty hours a week now and also hold hearings in Stafford on Tuesdays. And how do we deliver service? Quality of assistance. We try to make sure that our clerks are up to date on all the latest. There's a lot of training, constant training is going on. High level of professionalism. I require that in my employees, my clerks. Make people accountable, meaning the people that use the court, meaning the attorneys and the fiduciaries and others that come before me. We make sure that they do their inventories, tax returns, accountings, on time. We give them assistance, though, to do it. We want to kind of keep things running along. Collaboration with other courts. I do a lot of work with other courts. I fill in for other judges when they have conflicts. People like Judge Zelman in Windsor-Lox Tobacco Valley Court, Judge Killian in Hartford, Judge Lassman Fisher in Greater Windsor, which is South Windsor, Judge Purnell in Rockville, and I get a lot of assistance myself from Judge Canerum, who's the probate court administrator in West Hartford. And he's got a staff of attorneys there who are available. When you call, they've got the answer right away, so it's very helpful. With regards to the budget, as you know from prior years, towns are required to provide probate courts with a budget for supplies, record-keeping facilities, postage, publications, and periodicals. And the salaries and benefits of court personnel is paid for by an annual appropriation through the probate court administration. Because of consolidation, last year, probate court administration was able to save $2 million. So actually, the probate court system is actually very, very much upfront with regards to the legislature. They like it because it's the example of where you consolidate an organization and save money at the same time and enhance the services that you provide. So it really has worked very well. The budget paid for by four towns in the district, Enfield pays, and it's all based on the grand list, so Enfield pays 65.47 percent of our budget, Summers 16.86 percent, Stafford 16.16 percent, and Union 1.5 percent of the budget is paid for by Union.
As it should be.
So just a couple of quick things about the budget itself. As you can see, the overall budget has increased by 36 percent. Now, that obviously is a real eye-opener and lots of questions there as to why is that the case? By implementing consolidation, because of implementation of consolidation and the revised practice book, we are increasing some items here. And sometimes they're only for, it's a one-year-only increase. The revised practice book, it's the first time our practice book's been revised in thirty-six years. Major effort. It took a year and a half to do it. We had something like twenty-two different attorneys and clerks working on it. And because of that, there are certain efficiencies and additional requirements that were put into the system. For instance, it requires additional copies and mailings where, in the past, we just, when we'd signed a decree, and I would sign a decree, we would just send it to the attorney or to the fiduciary. Now, the requirement is you have to send the decree to everybody, every party in the case. So we used to maybe only send out two. Now we may have to send out ten or fifteen because each party has to get one. Also, so the result is it's really doubled our volume in copying and mailing. And because of that, we've also increased fees for toner. It's gone up by 33 percent. You can see our mailage, our postage is a big factor here, $16,000. It's, obviously, that's something that's not controllable. I mean, it's a mandate, it's a, you might call it an unfunded mandate, but from the standpoint of the probate court administration, they just believe that it's appropriate that all parties get copies of decrees, so gotta comply with that. Another big item here is furniture. And I just wanted to mention that three years ago, when the budget was being considered, there was initially a $30,000 item for new furniture for the consolidated court. That was taken off the table because, at that time, it was uncertain exactly where the court was going to be. You know, there's a possibility it was going to be at the Hazard Institute. Of course, Union wanted to have it in Union, but we didn't think that was fair. But, you know, for instance, last year, we had $1,500 in furniture. And this year, we've got $4,579 in furniture, which is a significant increase. But basically, what that is, is that's in place of the $30,000 we were looking for three years ago. Three years ago, we were going to put in a new doorway into the vault through my office and do all kinds of other changes in the office. Well, that's all off the table. We're not doing that anymore. All we're doing now is we're trying to make best use of the space that we have. We're trying to set up a small, private room in the vault for attorneys and their clients where they can sit and talk to each other before the hearing. So in order to do that, we've got to buy a divider for the vault to put that in. We're also buying two tables. The table, the table that we have in there was donated by Rich Totoya's father about fifty years ago, and it's basically wearing out. So we're going to buy two new tables for the vault, forty-two inches long each. We're going to buy eight stacking chairs that we can use and move around whenever we need them in the vault. So that's the reason for the $4,500 request for furniture. And that's pretty much it, as far as describing what the increases are for. And so in other words, next year, this year, our budget is like $34,000. Next year, we won't have the furniture budget like we have this year. And so I suspect next year's budget will probably come in under $30,000.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Cindy, first.
Thank you for your detail and your explanation. Just because you are here, how's in Enfield? Other towns don't contribute to your furnishings or to what you need here for Enfield, do they?
They do.
They do?
They contribute to the budget.
And that...
That's what I, what I mentioned was their, their contribution is, Summers' contribution is, well, 17 percent, Stafford's 16 percent, Union 1.5 percent.
So that money helps offset some of our costs here in Enfield?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, what about the space? I know one...
And the benefit, of course, is you get to keep the furniture. Don't tell that to the other towns, though.
Well, seeing you record it on TV. You've got to learn how not to use that.
What about the space issue? I know at one time, there was some discussion about having a space issue here in Enfield. Has that been resolved? Are you comfortable now with what we have?
Absolutely. I mean, the space, the only space issue that really existed was whether or not we're going to move to the Hazard Institute. And I still think the Hazard Institute would be an appropriate place to go. It's good, well-located in the district. The problem is, it requires about an $800,000 federal grant in order to pull that off. And I just don't think it's competitive in regards to the other needs for federal assistance. So where we are now is where we're going to be for the duration, as far as I'm concerned. And we're very comfortable there, by the way. The space, I think, is excellent. You probably know that the courtroom itself and my office are in the old police vault. So it's very quiet, very private, and it's fantastic.
So it's working out?
Very well, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
I noticed, Tim, online, on your technical service, you have a 43.9 percent decrease?
Yeah.
You might have explained that. I missed that.
No, I didn't explain that. I just overlooked it. The reason for that decrease was we had a very large microfilming project where we're trying to microfilm all of the books that we have in the vault so that we can actually just destroy the books. Because we got it all on microfilm. So what that does, it creates additional space in the vault. We've pretty much finished the microfilm project. We've still got a little bit that we have to maintain on an annual basis. But the major microfilming that we were, we had to do is now completed. Books are being dispensed with. They're either going to the state library or they're being destroyed. Or Stafford thought they wanted to keep theirs for a while until they realized that they were moldy and they really didn't want to have it.
So that would be like a one-time expense, like the furniture you were talking about?
Well, no, that decrease will always be a decrease. I mean, that, that's a decrease in that line item because the microfilming is the major effort done.
Right, so that, right, that's what I'm saying. So you're, you're showing the reduction this year, which I appreciate. You know, some people would try to find another way to spend that money instead of decreasing your budget to offset that line.
Right.
Right. And I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that you, it was a one-time expense and you weren't going to need it for something else.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Tom?
Cindy got it for me. I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions for Judge Keeney? Great. Tim, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Keep up the great work.
Pleasure.
Awesome job Tuesday night at Thieves and Robbers, being the spokesman.
We filled the hall.
Yeah.
Two hundred people.
It was a great, great night.
Thank you.
I missed it. I had my little grandson, so I couldn't.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Have a good night. Next, we have our registrar of voters, Carol and Dave. You are the next contestants.
Hopefully, the price is right.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to flip through one. I'm aiming at the right place here. Y'all have this. This is the description of the organization chart.
Matt, do we have the presentations?
We haven't.
Yeah.
We usually just put them online, take access to it.
We'll be holding just one election, we assume, this year. We don't have any wind of...
Any winds of primaries?
No.
No. Just describes the functions of the department.
Right.
Changes.
Changes, the redistricting for the state, for the, for the town, town in 2013. So that will include some little information that has to be mailed out. Unfunded mandates that we, am I on the wrong page? Can I keep up with you? Okay.
Okay. We're trying to get through this in five minutes or less.
So, the unfun, what they're trying to do, they've recently had an election, they're going to have the, in the last election, they voted to have same-day registration. So that's going to be a change to what we've done in the past. And the, there'll be moderator training that we used to have to do every four years, but now we have to do it every two years. So all of our moderators and backup moderators and staff will be taking this training. We're going to have the trainer come here to Enfield, and we're going to do it here in the Enfield room, actually. So it gets a lot, a lot less mileage and stuff if we go to New England or something like that to do it. And the emergency day plan, we have to have like an emergency kit for every polling place.
That's right.
So we're going to, you know, that's some of the things that we've never paid for before. And then there is a typo on this. The number should be eight, four, five, five, oh, not eight, nine, five, five, oh. David had a momentary lapse of sanity.
It's on your sheet.
Oh, it was actually the, what, the Department 14, and then it was moved to 84.
Yes, it's the post town manager. He just typed it.
Yep.
Typed on my phone.
Okay, so the...
Oh, so yours is the same?
Yeah. Yeah, it is the same. Well, I just typed the sheet.
Unless you're feeling very generous.
Can you give you $5,000 more?
Yeah. We'll split it even. Or maybe we'll do it by the percentage of votes. I don't know.
How about if we leave it with the taxpayers?
Okay, all right, all right. Or we could give it to the, some other agency here that needs it, right? Okay. Our supplies aren't going up. The professional services, all these things are pretty much staying the same. The professional development is the Rovac that is mandatory for registrars to attend.
There are two conferences a year. And actually, I'm volunteered to, if I, appointed by the Secretary of State to serve on a commission to define what is registrar certification, which might need more training. We have, I think, sufficient dollars to cover whatever they're going to require once that is done. Oh, just a, deviations. The new election, the same-day voter registration, it's a new mandate, which we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do it here at Town Hall. We're going to work Town Manager's Office on educating the voters about the minor changes in council districts. Again, they're minor, but we have to do some education there. That's bullets two and three. Well, we're actually going to move the, the Shaker Pines people are going to vote at Barnard School like they always did. So we're going to move, you know, move them back to where they are. Everyone's going to be in their proper council district for it. And that's, that's what that slide says, basically. All the people in three are going to be in three, all the people in four and a couple of changes. And we have to be sure that whatever school security procedures are in place, do not impede the voters' right and ability to vote on Election Day. We don't, you know, because things keep changing. You guys are creating requirements, and we just have to ensure that on Election Day, I mean, without, there's no school.
Right.
And, and there's no, no in-service training, so it's basically an open building as opposed to having 6,000 people sign in, which would create a lot of controversy and problems with the voters. But anyway, that's, we have to make sure that that, that doesn't happen. And then, long-term, the House of Representatives, Carol and I are discussing today, just voted to add some new requirements that would go to referendum this November, but if passed for November of 2014 calendar year and for that summer, could, could impact us. We don't know yet. The, the two proposals were changing the definition of absentee voter or absentee eligibility to anyone. And voting in advance of the second Tuesday after the first Monday in November. So that just moved through the House yesterday or day before, so we're waiting to see. And I would suspect that it's going to pass. We don't know what that's going to do. But those are, you know, we say early voting. We just don't know. Those are future considerations this council has to be aware of. And there are 169 cities and towns with registrars, and nine of them are full-time employees of that city or town. 160 are in a, you know, technically an employee but part-time. So when you go to voting two months out, you know, it's just going to, or three months out, or whatever requirements, or one month out for 30 days, we don't know what they're going to do. But I suspect the vote was 90 to 49 in the House for all these changes. And majority party controls the Senate, so I suspect, you know, unless there's some wavering, there'll be a vote for that, too, and we'll see what happens. But I just want, we all have to be aware, these are coming down the road. I mean, for this year, we are adding people to register people to vote on Election Day. So that's, it's included in our cost of elections, but more than likely to not, it has to be in a place where we can access a computer, which is the only, only Town Hall. It won't be in this room because it's where we do absentee voting, or absentee counting, and be somewhere here. But anyway, that's a new, a new procedure we're going to have to deal with. You all should be aware of, on Election Day, this is a municipal election, people will be eligible to register to vote. We do not have the procedures yet from the state. They're coming. But they're going to kind of explain what we're going to do. I guess that's it.
I'll sack the presentation. Cindy?
Thank you. Just two questions. One, I see in the salaries, you're looking for $73,000, and Town Manager has $68,000. So there's a reduction there in what you asked for?
Yeah, it's, it's explained on the following page, I guess, the registrars, administrative assistant, training, clerical, temporary election workers. There's a, I'm trying to think what the change was. I don't recall, to be honest. We met two months ago, so it's...
It's something to do with our deputy registrars, too, because they were, they were making less money than many of our poll workers.
Matt, do you have...
Yeah. The first is an increase in the pay for the two registrar voters. And it's going up from 17.5, and what I have proposed, going up to 22.5 for each. So that's 10,000 of the change. I think in the budget that they presented, those increases were a little bit higher than what I put in. Then the deputy registrar, I think, actually, some of the money that is now showing up in the part-time salaries was located in the election workers in the past. And I think there's a little bit more responsibilities you're giving to the deputy registrar, so they wanted to move that into the, the part-time salary. So those are the two major changes.
So there's a reduction from what they're looking for of about 5,000, is, is what this says in the book. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. And my other question would be, to your point, both of you, same-day registration and costs associated with the new mandates, you don't have any idea what that's going to be. Would conceivably, you come back to the council once you get an idea of what you're going to need? I mean, realistically, we have to fund, you know, voting.
Well, I guess a short answer is yes. We could, but, but we, until the Secretary of the State's office and their Elections Division defines what we have to do for same-day, I don't know. That, they, they're very prescriptive about the kinds of people you have to hire or the kinds of positions you have to staff at a polling place. It's not in our control. So, and so they're going to be prescriptive on something. We think it's covered in there under election workers, but again, we reduced election workers from two to one election. But we think there's, discussions with Matt, there is sufficient, we think, to cover that increase...
Position.
Increase role of two or three people. They're going to have to manage same-day registration because we don't know the volume. We just, it's a brand-new thing.
So, so what will happen? And you will come to council if you find that you're short for the money?
If we...
Is that about right?
Yeah, if we have...
Because you, I mean, you, you don't have it in here, so you're going to have to get it.
Yeah, but we can't, you know, we can't project it or guess at it because we don't have a clue.
But that's something that you can do if you have to, right?
Oh, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Tom?
Yeah, I'm sure we're public to see you back. Because, you know, with the same-day registration, I'm sure if it's only going to be one or several polling places, that'll be the, the big question. I tell you, I'm in favor, anything that makes it easier for people to come and vote. 100% behind it. If we got to, you know, staff someone at every polling place for that, and I hope it's that many people come out to register on same-day, and the same with the voting in advance. Is that going to be, most models in most states are one, maybe two areas, like a Town Hall that you can come in throughout the week or on a Saturday, or it's totally up in the air?
Yeah.
But it'll still mean stopping in the end.
Correct.
And at least one, one area, depending on volume.
But, but the, the, the voting in advance will not happen until November of 2014. So I just want you to be aware of it.
But it'll be a referendum if, if the Senate passes it.
Yeah.
But I think that's great, especially for families that, you know, on Saturdays, and that's always a great time to come out and vote also. You'll see a definite, definitely different demographic coming to the polls.
Some states have fewer places on Saturdays, like four consecutive Saturdays leading up. Some, yeah, and, or they'll, they'll, I don't think they do it at all the places that are open on Election Day, but they define something.
I, I think in most of the states, it's basically almost like an absentee ballot. And it just gets to be sent in early.
Oh, okay.
And they, they probably still get counted on the same time that we do the absentee ballots on Election Day. Just...
Just an easier absentee ballot, actually.
Yeah. I mean, there are states that do total mail-in ballots, so, you know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? I just, I got a question on the, on the compensation for the registrar. So if it's going up from 17.5 to 22.5, is there, is there guidelines that we follow? Are there, sorry? Are there guidelines that we follow based on the, for the compensation of our registrars? So really, it's, what's the determining factor of, you know, it's a $5,000 increase per registrar. What's the determining factor to put in such a request into the budget?
I can help answer the question because I think I did this a year ago to Matt. We thought, yeah, we started discussing this 12 or 15 months ago. Kind of provided Town Manager with kind of a synopsis of other towns, which was 2,010 numbers. And like, I give an example, Vernon with 30,000 people pays their registrars 35,000. I'm just giving you a number.
Each?
Each.
Okay.
Each.
Yep.
And South Windsor, which is again smaller, is in the 28, 30,000 range. So whatever we proposed was still going to be less than what you might find for a comparable community. Again, we can't compare ourselves to full times. That's, that's out of the...
Like Hartford, that makes like 80,000 or 90,000.
Yeah, it's more like 110 or something. But it's, it's, so, so that was one bit of information provided to Town Manager. The other thing was, did look at the history of compensation. And the last time this was changed was fiscal year 2004. So it's been 10 years. And I know we've been here since 607, so, you know, it's not, it's not changed in 10 fiscal years. But the, the basis was looking at data from other cities and towns. Tried to get comparable, gave them like 20 or 30 communities to look at.
Also, just let me add, you know, the workload has significantly increased over the last five years with the different mandates that are being put out there. And it just, it's a different world today than it was five years ago.
Yeah, I agree. And ever compute how many hours, you know, you put in as a part-time job, as...
Well, we, a lot of the things we don't do here in the office, but we do them, you know. And, and so, no, I haven't never done that.
Yeah, I've never done it either. But I mean, on an, on an average, if you look at six years ago, I thought there's like 10 hours a week. It's more like 25 hours to 30, depending on the time of year and what you're doing. But again, it could be as high as, you know, weeks preceding an election, you're working 60, 70 hours, other times you're working 10 or 15. Again, it's, but it's, it's in that range now.
And then, just so that I'm straight on, on the other line items under position classification. So the admin assistant is actually going down 1,000, where I thought you were, I thought I had heard that you were looking for, to bump that up because of the increased responsibility.
Yeah, I'll bump up the hourly rate from 14 to 16,000. Yeah, I'll bump up the hourly rate from fourteen to sixteen dollars, but I don't think we've expended twenty thousand dollars, so Matt took a look at the actuals...
Okay.
And made an adjustment.
Okay. So although the number appears to have fallen by a thousand, it's really, it's covering the one person that's there with a slight bump up. Required training for, and then the clerical assistant temporary going down to two thousand, that's kind of the shift in, in the responsibilities between the two. Okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions, comments? Then I just wanna thank you two for the work that you do for our elections. I know it's a lot of work, and it's an important job, an important function, and luckily, here in Enfield, our elections tend to go off without a hitch. The lines are not long in comparison to other communities, and you constantly look for ways to improve the process, so that the next election is, is, you know, is easier for the folks to get in and vote and get out. So, and especially last year, we appreciate you working with the council on the redistricting, and understanding that, we felt strongly that, that it was important to keep people in their voting, in their council voting districts, so that voters are creatures of habit. They may switch lines that they vote on from party, but they like to vote at the same place, which is, which is really important, so. Thank you both again, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next up, recreation.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm gonna put it on the works. Thank you.
No, just, wait, the clicker's right there.
Thank you. This is a picture of our Tons of Fun Day Camp last summer. As you can see, they're having tons of fun. Our basic mission statement, we seek to provide quality leisure opportunities which contribute to the environment needs and interests of the residents of Enfield. Recreation is recognized as a necessary service to the community and integral part of Enfield's health and welfare. And our purpose is to provide participants with a fun and satisfying program in a safe environment, and as things continue to change, we continue to change how we control that safe environment, which we will be doing more of this year. Our organizational chart, a lot of people don't realize that it's myself, Allison is the Assistant Reg Supervisor and the Secretary, and that's it, that work full-time. Everything else under recreation programs and swimming is all seasonal staff, which we have seventy to ninety throughout the year that work for us. Our objectives always are to identify new programs' revenue sources, increase our marketing, continue to provide diverse programs for all ages. We do start programs at six months, and there is no age limit on the other end. We continually review and advise user fees to make programs self-sustaining. We're always looking to increase aquatics offerings, although sometimes that's on the difficult side. I don't know if you've been noticing, there's been a tremendous amount of drownings in the area in the last year and a half, so that is something that we are continuing to work on, to make sure that our programs are safe and that we have adequate training, and we have enough lifeguards on duty at all times to make sure that that doesn't happen. And we did start working with the architect firm on a community center project, which of course makes us very happy. We look forward to doing that, and hoping that that comes to fruition, because it's very exciting for us. Changes to our operations, we've had some questions over the last couple of years about residents versus non-residents. We've been working very hard to make sure that we're accommodating, accommodating the residents first. This year, camp is gonna be residents only. We do have, we do take up to eighty kids at camp weekly. We had six weeks of regular camp and one week of post camp this summer, so we have more than enough kids to accommodate in Enfield. We are only taking Enfield residents. Same with basketball, we only take Enfield residents, and this year, we had close to seven hundred kids just in our youth basketball program, so we don't need to take non-residents. Dolphins is one program now, we do need to have non-residents to make sure that it, it runs without the non-residents. We probably would not be able to have a team, or it would be astronomically expensive for the Enfield residents to pay for the full cost of the program. But we did make some changes to that this season, and we are requiring that non-residents wait a period of time before they register, allowing the residents to register first. Swim lessons are very popular, and in the summertime, we can allow non-residents, because we have so many lesson options, morning lessons at JFK or at the Activity Center, and night lessons at the Activity Center, that we've decided that during the school year, we will open it up to residents. Prior to the start of lessons, if we have any openings, then we'll take non-residents, but we are just gonna open that to residents for now during the winter time. We just ran our track clinic in Hershey Track Meet yesterday, and that's one of our programs that we do just for Enfield residents. We have a lot of non-residents that would like to participate, but it's a tremendous amount of paperwork to get that into the, to our state association, and we just do that for our own residents, to make sure that they're accommodated. And then we have other programs that are just for residents, all of our special events, and anything that's free, and anything that has a season pass is for Enfield residents only. So we are working to make sure that we're accommodating our residents first, taking non-residents when we can accommodate them, once our residents have registered, to make sure that some of those programs that, if we didn't have non-residents, maybe wouldn't run, and would be too expensive for the resident. This summer, we are gonna accept first graders at camp, so camp will be broken up into grades one through four and five through ten, and we opened registration last Friday, and as of today, we're fifty percent full. We talked a little bit about dolphins. Based on what has been happening in the aquatics area in the last year and a half, we felt it was prudent that we add a specific lifeguard on deck during practices and meets that will be there just to lifeguard. Even though every single person that coaches for us is lifeguard certified, and ha, we require that, we will have an additional lifeguard on deck just for lifeguarding. So in case there is a problem, and a coach is working with a group of kids, there is a set of eyes that are wa, is watching the whole pool. And then, one thing that has come up is a request for semi-private swim lessons, and we're gonna look at adding that in the summer at the Activity Center in the morning. Basketball, we are working on improved security policies and procedures, and we will continue to work on that as the school policies evolve, we will evolve with that. And once we determine what that's gonna be, we're allowing new training as well, to make sure that staff is trained for that. There are no deviations from last year, it's a zero percent change. And just a couple pictures of what we have going on. Upper left-hand corner is our summer carnival. We have seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty kids last year. It's one of our free programs, it's open to all Enfield residents, and we doubled the number in the last couple of years, so that's one of our free programs that we still have left. Bottom left-hand corner is the fishing derby, which is scheduled for June first this summer. The upper right-hand corner is the Activity Center pool, and you can see the new deck. And yesterday, we had pool company come and add in the handicap accessible chair, which will be available this summer, so that pool will now be fully handicap accessible, meeting all ADA requirements. And the bathrooms were renovated a few years ago, which also meet ADA requirements. And then the bottom right-hand corner is another picture of camp. Questions?
If I could, before you, just comments, observations, and compliments to the recreation staff. Three area, just four points, number one, and three points one, their emphasis on safety within the past year, first in the lifeguard area, based on some of the other tragedies that have occurred in our region, and the fact that Mary initiated these efforts without any, you know, in order to move forward, so that that area of concern can hopefully be addressed, including Doran Dolphin Swim Practices, where, as she said, there are a number of different certified persons, certified lifeguards present, but maybe not focusing on that particular aspect. The second has been working with Chris Bronson on the security of our programs, particularly the summer camp program, and the concerns that were raised, and making sure that access to the JFK Middle School. Mary worked very closely with Chris, with the police department on, and with the school officials on a badge ID system, so that the only authorized personnel were allowed into the area, and that's Mary and Allison together. The second thing, I'd just like to point, has been the continued success of our summer camp program, which was initiated about ten years ago now, I believe?
Two thousand and four, I think.
Two thousand, so almost, so this will be our tenth summer running it, and as Mary has indicated, it's at fifty percent full already. And this has been, once again, a self-reliant program, and has really been quite a success. And it's finally, the, we do, trying to reduce any reliance on general fund support, but to utilize program fees to support recreation activities as much as possible, so that the general fund impact of this division is hopefully minimized. Thank you.
Greg. Thank you, Dan. Questions from the council? Tom?
The fees of keeping it at a reasonable cost, which I think you've done over the years, is affordable for the, all our citizens, which is really important, most important, especially with swimming. Every child to teach to swim is, is one less probability of ever drowning, and I think it's our responsibility as a community, too, to offer these programs, even with the Dolphins, if it gets a little bit shy on Enfield residents, I think it's great that we do open it up. And the difference I see with the swimming instructions in your program, and maybe what has happened in some of the schools, where it's that problem of an instructor instructing with no one watching. And, you know, I've seen the, the open swims, and there's six guards, I would imagine, there are five at, at one time, and you do keep a good number out there, which I think, you know, for anybody that would be worried about that, there isn't one, even at the way you run it now. I truly believe that, so keep up the good work. Thank you very much. I use your programs, my children use your programs, and now my grandkids are, so I'm really happy that we can still give this to our kids in the town. Thank you. And our bus trips, which are a lot of fun for people, if you wanna go to see a, a Celtics game, or a Boston...
I'll soon be happy to take you.
Yeah, and I know Allison's always gotta go, and she has to put in the movies for us, and they're fun times, encourage people to go.
Thanks, Tom. Cindy?
No, I think what Tom said is absolutely correct. Thank you for all your hard work in recreation. It's very important, especially the swimming for the kids. You know, if we can teach them early, we can avoid a lot of issues later. And again, my children, my grandchild, and, and all the programs you have are just super, and I, I only hear good things about your programs, so keep up the good work, and thank you for doing the work.
Nothing like a TV show.
Oh, turn it off, it's great.
No, it's nothing like the TV show. Thank you. Thank you, it's nothing like the TV show.
No, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Ken?
I agree with them. You guys do a phenomenal job. I mean, it's been a real tough four or five years, you've stuck with it, you've increased your programs, and your programs work for the entire town. I don't care what age you are, I don't care where you live in town, the entire community benefits by what you do, including myself, when we go get the picnic pack you have. It, it's unbelievable, and it's something that would be one of my last things to even consider making a cut on. And I wanna thank you guys for stepping up, doing the hard work with less, but you've done it, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bill.
How is the lifeguard market looking for this summer?
Lifeguard market, for the last, maybe, three, four, five years, it's been very It's tough to get kids certified, because it's such a big course, and you really have to be a good swimmer, and you have to overpass the course, and then certificate certifications current. We stay steady, we have usually fifteen full-time and two part-time every summer, and we seem to manage that every year. I probably have eight applications right now, probably hire a couple for the summer, so...
Still competitive, competitive rate?
Yeah. But we're not the only town that has that issue. It's, it's across the board. There's a huge liability, so you have to really find the right sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old that's, can swim, and that is a strong swimmer, that's willing to take that responsibility on of having to save somebody's life, and we do have saves every summer, so it's not like they're just sitting in the chair.
It's not summon yourself, right?
No, they're not just sitting in the chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, first of all, yeah, thanks for everything you do and everything, and I agree with what others have said, it's a good, all the programs are good. I know we did the New York City trip, it was last October, and I went to the memorial and stuff, and it was, it was a great experience there and back. So our guide did a great job telling us everywhere we were, and, and quite interesting, things I didn't even know about, so. But anyways, I wanna ask a question about the, about the summer camp.
Sure.
Um, just, I'm not familiar with it, and to be honest with you, I'm just asking 'cause I have grandkids in, in, in town now, that moved in town. So, so where's, where's the camp held at?
JFK.
At JFK.
It's primarily outside. We hold it out back behind the gym area.
Okay.
They have access to the gym, a couple classrooms, cafeteria if needed, the pool, the basketball courts, the fields out back. If it's a rainy day, they'll spend most of it inside, but we try to, try to spend most of our time outside, because we consider it an outdoor keam. But...
You have different kids each week, or you get them for the...
They can register for one week or six weeks.
Okay.
And it runs from eight-thirty to three-thirty.
We run eight-thirty to three-thirty, and we have the option for extended care for an additional fee, so if people work, their kids can stay from three-thirty to five. We provide aftercare, and like Mary said, they reg, some register for one week, some register for the whole summer. Every week, we have a different theme, where the activities and the field trips revolve around that. They go on a field trip every week somewhere. Every day, they swim. They do food activities, like pizza parties, ice cream sundae parties on Fridays, so, and I think the best thing is, is we have staff that return every year, that really like to work with the kids, they're college-age, they're people that are going to school to be a teacher, or work with children, so...
Okay, all right. I'll ask more questions, maybe offline, and get some information from you, too, and like many of us, I'm glad we got good professionals in the swim pools protecting our kids. I think a number of us would be good at floating, without so much at swimming, so, and I'm glad we have that there, too, lifeguards for the kids, with all the stuff we've heard recently, so, thank you.
That's Greg. Carol?
Mary, thank you for the comments about the town residents. We're trying, you know, every year, that's my pet peeve, is I feel like the programs should be prioritized for town residents, and I understand the need to open it up to supplement some of the, the cost, but I, I always felt very strongly about town residents having a priority, seeing that they're the ones paying for the programs for a lot of the programs anyway, so, thank you for that. And you guys, you do an awesome job, and then my grandkids took advantage of the swim lessons at JFK, and a couple of the other programs, y'all, so you folks do an awesome job. so you folks do an awesome job, so thank you. And thank you for the comment ahead of time.
We're, we're, we're working on it.
Anyone else? All right, I got just a couple. You'd mentioned in your presentation, security at basketball. Can you explain what that's for?
After the Newtown incident, and the town started talking about school security, we started talking about security for basketball when we're at the schools at night, and how we're gonna handle that. And, you know, whether we want to look at additional training, or hiring specific people to do that, signing people in and out. We've talked about numerous issues, possibilities, things maybe that we could do, maybe that wouldn't be feasible. And it's an ongoing process, and obviously, based on what the school is gonna do, and maybe what they're gonna require us, what we're gonna do for next year, so. We're waiting to hear what the school is gonna require, before we make any final judgments on that.
Okay.
But some of the schools close the doors between the gym wing and the school. Some keep them open, some have their front doors open, because they may have an after-school program, and they're letting parents in to pick the kids up at that time. You know, we try to stay strictly in the gym area. We do have a supervisor on duty at every facility, whether it's practice or game. Whether we're gonna require that person to have more responsibility, maybe having a phone available, a landline available in each gym, so that if there is a problem, anybody can get to the landline and dial nine-one-one, so they know specifically where the call is coming from, and everybody's cellphone works inside, and that everybody knows how to hit the send button after they hit nine-one-one when they're nervous. So just different things that we've been talking about.
This is based on assessments that Mary and Chris, and I think Captain Hall did when they visited through. We'll continue to follow up on.
Okay. And then my other question is probably not for Mary and Allison, but the JFK gym, where we talked about needing some sprucing up of the JFK gym. What's that?
I believe to have in this.
We canceled that.
I think, I think that.
The gym floor itself is being rehabbed this week.
Yep.
And they're looking at, over the summer, doing some of the painting and improvements.
Okay, perfect. Because I know we tried to do it, we were trying to do it during Christmas time, but then the kids wouldn't have places to have gym during the winter months, so.
Yeah, it was gonna take, it was, it would take an extra week into the, when the school came back into session, so they decided to wait.
Great. And thanks for offering a variety of programs. So I took our first trip down to New York to see the nine-eleven memorial, and it was, it was a great trip.
It was. They're always a good time. We just brought a group of people last week, and they had a good time. I get on the bus, and my husband usually comes with me, he's good, and he sits in the front, and he, I walk down, and he's like, "Where have you been?" And I'm like, "Oh, I was talking to this person about that," so I get everyone's story, and we have a good time.
You're a good hostess.
Thank you.
You took good care of us on, on the way home.
We watched National Treasure on the way there, and National Treasure Two on the way back.
And we saw that this past week.
The Fishing Derby's the first, the June first.
June, June one?
June first.
Yes.
That's a free event.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Good job.
Excellent. If I don't do well at health tracks, I'll bring him from June.
Because our, our next set of lessons are full already.
Our what?
Our next set of lessons that's gonna be out of the month are already full.
When is this month?
Then we over-ratio, and then.
No, 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 I would never do that, but I didn't realize that.
One thing I liked about you.
We had that, I didn't, I didn't know.
We run them during the school year, too.
Didn't realize that. So the next step, the next opportunity would be June, you said.
To me, I thought that was a great.
That's why I said try health tracks, or try maybe one of the little ones.
Let me tell you something, that made, that just made my day, knowing I didn't have to be back in the car.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
Hey, if you have an opening, let me know. If something happens.
PR, that's.
Okay, okay.
I like to keep it in my glove box, and I won't let it in there.
Sure.
My kids haven't had the flu in three or four years.
Next, town clerk, Greg, Dan.
Ours are classy, they're powerful.
Doing good.
All right.
All right. First, you gotta know how to operate the. The little button that goes forward, all right, well, that makes sense. All right, all right. We have a few slides. Again, it's gonna show you our mission statement, which we hope is there.
There are two slides?
Yeah. Not hard, am I?
This one.
To provide the highest quality service in a timely, professional manner to the general public, council, coworkers, and other government agencies. We're a service department, and most of what we do is taking care of the needs of the people that are listed up there. We want to do the best job we can, and work really hard at it. This is our chart of the organization, and right now, that is complete. You can see the records clerk is still, is not filled, and probably won't be at this point. The records manager seems to be able to manage things pretty well right now. It was really an important position when we were first getting up and running, but the one person right now seems to fill our needs. It would only come up if we had another big project that we had to work on, or something like that. So this is working well for us. How am I doing this one? There we go. Most of our accomplishments this year, kind of low-level, I'll be really honest. The records manager has helped a lot of different departments. People have moved on, new people have come, getting their records organized and ready to go, whether it be moves, as with the tax office and assessors, they did a lot of organization. It's a great time when you're moving from office to office to clean out, and, you know, reassess, and things like that. So Greg was very busy, he helped with police accreditation quite a bit. They don't miss much when they come to do the accreditation, so he helped, he enjoyed working on that, I believe. We continue to try to find ways in our office to just save money, and our biggest thing right now is just getting away from copying and filing everything. We have different ways and files that we're just scanning records now, and keeping them that way, as long as they fall into the retention. But that's basically been our focus. We've added some more years to the land record indexes that are available online. People can search land records from their home or business office, nineteen seventy-six to the present, and we keep working on that as well. We've completed our fifth phase of an ongoing grant project to get our vital records, which are birth, marriage, burial, death. Microfilmed and rebounded, lasted many, many more years. And again, that's more, Greg did help with the human resources office, that changed as well. He also created a file plan for public works, and then we can't stop brian about our election, our presidential election. We administered thirteen hundred absentee ballots that year, and that's a lot, because it's all handwork. It's a lot of work. So I don't think we've had any complaints. I think the people who needed their ballots got it, and most of them came back to us, and we were happy about that. We want to continue our land record imaging project, and that is a process, again, those indexes are available, but they don't all have images that can be pulled up when you find what you're looking for. We're gonna keep working on that, and try to add the years to that. We also want to get our vital record information into indexes that are easy to use and find. We're back to nineteen eleven, so we want to keep going backward on that. And we'll continue to plan for grants. We want to begin to be ready to accept electronic recordings. We had a demonstration here just yesterday. It'll be another facet of land record recording that we're excited about. It won't completely take over the processes like we do it now, but it will be one more option for the companies that record with us from California, or different places like that, but we think we'll get it used a lot there. And we want to continue the records management program. Our big thing now is getting water pollution control, their records under plans and like that. We'll complete our grant project to microfilm those vital records that I keep talking about. Again, this year, we will complete it, and we'll be glad about that, and then we'll start to take over that yearly process in our own operating budget. After that, we'll have to look for another project to do. This is our budget breakdown. It hasn't changed that much this year. And we've got one more way to look at it here. Of course, salaries and benefits are our biggest. We try very hard to keep all our other services down, and try to run as quickly as possible. So I'll ask you, if there's any questions, if you.
Great, thank you. Suzanne, questions? Cindy?
Just one comment, Suzanne. As always, we're very proud of your office, and of the courtesy that's extended to the public, and the hard work that you do, so thank you for that, and all the people that work with you.
It's really a pleasure working there, and the people.
It really, it's good to hear the positive feedback from people. Thank you.
Any questions for Suzanne? Any comments?
Tom? Very busy office. I know that, I was just in recently, and it's between people going into the record room, pulling record, it's a bustling office, and do a good job. And I only hear good things from residents that go in there, which is very important.
That's good.
And, and the budget is very little, in addition to us, so very good job.
Thank you.
Greg?
Okay, I just wanted to say the same thing, and just, I was mentioning before you gave your presentation, that I appreciated as a resident, I came in for the dog license last year, and I always keep my dog's information in the glove box, the only time I look at it, it comes off. Could not find it. But it came up, I had my check and stuff, and I said, "I don't have the vaccination," and I thought, "I'm gonna be sent back down to go get it from my veterinarian," but they had the list of veterinarians' phone numbers available. Took them, somewhat thirty seconds to call, verify, and then, and so I, that kind of courtesy to the residents is just typical of what you guys do. It's a great, great crew there, always pleasant, and of course, yourself, I appreciate what you do, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg, anyone else? Thanks, Suzanne. Wonderful job.
As usual. Nothing changes, so Suzanne.
Finance.
Finance.
Last but not least.
Also the thickest.
Finance.
I ran out. I've been going through this, I bought this free bag though, and a week and a half to leave. Thank you.
Well, that electronic records.
It's such a touching moment, no, I looked at you about this. I feel fine, I can't.
That was like, I think mine is a lot.
I think that's brilliant.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Finance.
Is there audio with this? We got music?
No.
Oh, well, that sure looks good.
It sure looks like it, but I won't play. It just had a little like chink in sound for money.
Oh.
But it sounded more like Las Vegas, so I thought.
Money coming in?
That's going out. The arrow, right? So the mission statement of the finance department is to provide management direction and planning services for the fiscal affairs of the town, to the town manager, town council, and town departments. No shocking changes there. The finance department is comprised of three divisions. Treasury, which provides general accounting services, cash management, payroll, and accounts payable. The assessor-collector division is in charge of property assessments and task collection. General Services provides purchasing services, bid management. They man the customer service kiosk, and they are also in charge of the mail. These are the major projects that we continue to work on. The first involves utilizing technology to improve the delivery of the services for the department. We want to make sure we complete our reports in a timely manner. Review of investments is referring primarily to operating cash and cash on hand. How can we maximize our investments in this environment where we get about three-tenths of one percent interest in our CDs in a year? So that's been a challenge. We, we need to review our pension administrator. The focus here is on the fees that they charge. We pay approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year in pension fees, and that's comprised of the valuation, investment manager fees, record-keeping fees, and benefit payments. The biggest chunk of that is for investment management fees. That's about ninety percent of the six hundred thousand dollars that we pay. So in, in an environment where it's tough to maximize your interest earnings, you really need to look closely at the fees that you're going for, and make sure you're getting, getting the value from those. And then lastly, we're always working on improving the delinquent task collection process. Two weeks ago, we came to you and, and introduced our plan to have a tax collector sale to try and improve our collections. We sent out the first notices for that sale last week, and we plan to have the sale at the end of August. So we hope that will be successful. And that'll be an ongoing annual sale that we do. This year, we merged the location of the assessor and tax collector departments down to this floor. I think you've all probably done the bright new Sheri office they have. They like it down there, and it's, it's better for the operations. This, this budget doesn't propose any changes to the work, to the way we're operating right now. Now, this is a snapshot of our two thousand and fourteen budget. And most of the budget is comprised of salaries and fringe benefits. That's eighty-eight percent of our budget. Professional and technical services includes the fee that we pay to the DMV, so that they can capture delinquent motor vehicle taxes at the point of registration. It also includes ten thousand for personal property audits. And the other major expenditure there, other purchase services, includes printing, mailing, telephone, and the other bits are really pretty sophisticated. I think there's really virtually no deviations from the current year, no personnel changes, no service changes, and it's a point-two percent increase in the overall current budget. As for policy questions, we don't have any at this time. That's the finance department budget.
we don't have any at this time. That's finance for our budget.
All right. Questions on finance? Bill?
It's curiosity. With the proposed legislation around motor vehicle taxes, is it, have you seen anything or heard anyone indicate whether this ridiculous charge that the DMV assesses would go away upon adoption?
The, oh, for the capturing, no, I haven't heard a thing.
I know we-
We're still paying.
We, huh?
We're just paying.
If we're gonna continue, yeah, as usual, there's still taxes from prior years, you know, that we're collecting too.
I know we kind of griped about that charge last year, but I thought we did have some valid questions around how the state comes up with that figure, given that the process is completely electronic. Are you, either of you aware of whether there was a reasonably decent response ever received on how they justify that?
Well, we did, we did receive, you might remember, we did receive-
I remember we received something saying, "Pay it."
But there was, there was a response within that that kind of explained why they had to charge it, to be honest. I'll stop that. I can't remember what that was.
Okay, I'll dig back as well.
Based on the budget.
Yeah.
It seemed rather arbitrary, given that it's a completely electronic calculation.
I'm pretty sure it wasn't, though.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set. Question for finance?
Just-
Cindy, go ahead.
Keep us on the right track, so. Did a great job with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Carol?
Then when the auctions come up, can you just give us all a little reminder? I'm sure we'll get it anyway, but just jog our memories to follow how this goes because this is a first.
We're starting out with thirty-five properties, and I'm sure, I have a lot of confidence that it will be whittled down to at least half, half a billion by the time we get to the end of August. Yeah, people are already, you know, they've been calling and they're trying to make payment arrangements and-
Good. That's awesome.
Need further questions? Very good. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. No need for executive session, correct?
Motion to adjourn.
So there's a motion to adjourn by Cindy.
Second.
Executive by Greg. All those in favor?
All in favor.
Those opposed? We are adjourned?
Next step, next meeting?
Uh, well, next step is Wednesday, budget hearing.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.